And why they should be happy to fork over more taxes. Mr. Hagan's neighbor Carl and Sharon's house on Rattan paid only $637 in taxes in 2013. With the proposed tax increase, it would go up to 689, which is an 8 percent increase in taxes. Mr. Jalapaska, a lot of folks would like to have your taxes. Over five years, your city taxes have increased to only a total of $76. Not so your neighbors Frank and Diana on Pecos, who paid $767 in city taxes last year. This year, it'll be closer to 806 with the proposed tax. A 5 percent increase for Frank and Diana in one year. Tom, perhaps you can share your property appraisal secrets with the rest of us. Ms. Elise, not to leave you alone. You didn't know that your neighbors live in a higher rent district? Last year, Lewis and Dolores on Bobbling paid $386. This year, the city will extort $448 from them, a whopping 14 percent tax increase. Thank you. Mr. Young, Rock and Deborah, they live on Rosewood. Last year, you required only the city get paid $861. This year, with that tax increase, it'll be $931. That's only 7.5 percent increase for Rock. Mr. Palasic, Thomas and Phyllis live on Country Club. They wrote $3,339 check to the city. This year, they will be even happier to contribute $3,510 with your proposed tax increase. 5 percent's not that bad. Actually, it's the lowest among the people I've studied. Mr. Bachnight, you better hope that Grant on Country Club was out of town when the CAD letter arrived. Grant paid $2,362. This year's staff proposal will increase Grant to $2,596, a 9 percent increase. But better yet, Grant's city taxes has increased only 21 percent in the last four years. I like Grant. Mr. Alvarez, saving one is the best for you. Mr. Appraisal Board Representative, have you spoke with George on Convent Street? You ought to. He was one of the real lucky ones. He got saved by the 10 percent homestead increase limitation. Last year, George paid you only $417. This year, that will increase to $465. But just because of that savings, he was limited out. So instead, it's only with the jump to $500. But anyway, he's only got an 11 percent increase this year. Ladies and gentlemen, it's early in the budget process. Tax collections are down for the second year. That tells me there's less money available for increased taxes. Talk to your neighbor and see how happy they are.
Citizens' communication is still open for anyone else? Now's the time. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Matt Oker. My address is 2307 FM 2615. The recent comments by the mayor in the newspaper also piqued my interest a little bit. And I've heard a lot of people in these chambers throughout the years say they're not numbers people. Well, I'm happy to report that I am. So what I did was, I went out and I said, well, you know, maybe the mayor's right. Maybe we've been under taxed. Because at the end of the day, whether we're talking about rates or we're talking about values, at the end of the day, it's how much revenue this corporation brings in from the taxpayers that really matters. Rates don't mean anything if values are low or high, and the same if rates are high or low. They have to be combined together to give us a number. It's what we write on that check at the end of the day that matters. So I looked and what I did was, I did a study that was completely non-biased. I took the, I went by population. I took the next 10 cities that have higher populations in Victoria, the next 10 cities with lower populations in Victoria. So there were 21 subjects to my study. Interestingly enough, when I examined them by tax rate, Victoria had the ninth highest. So that was actually out of whack in the favor of the city of Victoria as far as property taxes. The property tax, the property to be taxed in billions was actually 11th, which is exactly where we should have been. The tax levy was actually ninth highest. So it was actually above the average. The total revenue was 11th, which is exactly where we should be. The revenue per capita was 12th, once again, right where we should have been. Now, another interesting deal, y'all talk a lot about economic development in these chambers. One of the areas where we lack extremely in comparison to our peers is in what they call other financing in the CAFERS. Guess where we rank in that category? Out of 21 cities, we are 18th. Another thing that gets talked about a lot in these chambers is how proud we are of our fund balance and how we have this rainy day fund, which coincidentally, that is one of the things I do agree with. Guess what? We rank 17th out of those 21 cities in that rainy day fund balance. Matter of fact, we are only $8 million above the lowest one. These numbers don't paint a pretty picture. They certainly don't paint the picture that Mayor Palasic told to the newspaper some days ago that basically, we have not been taxed enough. We are being taxed right where we should have been taxed evidently. And it's funny because, guess what, folks? These numbers are from 2012. Those were the latest numbers I could get. So unless every one of these other cities has been as aggressive in the last two years, which I highly doubt, then we're even far more above the norm. Because we've seen an 8 percent plus increase just in the CAD appraisals in the last two years. So I hope that y'all take some of that into account and reprioritize a little bit. Because if our streets are behind, it has absolutely nothing to do with y'all not collecting enough revenue. Y'all have had enough revenue. And I kind of, I take exception to some of the comments that I've heard throughout the years I've been coming here about how past councils are to blame for poor decisions and that y'all have somehow just been the unwitting recipients of, you know, these problems. Well, I would take you back to the time when you had the Charter Review Committee. Interestingly enough, I know for a fact, two of the people who sat on the council at that time invited the people that they replaced on the council to partake in that. We've got contracts with people that formerly sat on this council. Bill Russell, former member of this council, sits on the CAD board at y'all's direction. If these people were so derelict in their duty, then why do y'all continue to ask for their counsel? Doesn't make much sense to me. Let's expand the talent pool, folks. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chad Byrd at 102 Roads. I prepared a written statement, so forgive me for reading to you. I'm not here to discuss the merits of capital projects or specific details of the budget. I'd like to address a broader concern that impacts how taxpayers are made to perceive the collection of property tax revenue. The prevailing myth is that an increase in appraisals by the CAD should automatically create an increase in our tax bills. As far as, as far back as I can recall, the taxing bodies have used the CAD as the scapegoat for increased tax bills when the taxing bodies themselves have total control of and responsibility for their tax rates, which includes the power to prevent assessment increases from automatically converting into tax revenue increases through the adoption of effective tax rates. And you all know this. Taxing bodies are responsible for every dollar generated by their adopted tax rates. But you wouldn't know it based on the misleading rhetoric coming from these bodies this time of year. The taxing bodies like to use the example that the owner of a $100,000 home would pay about X dollars more than last year. But that statement contains no information about the change in value of that $100,000 home. It only takes responsibility for the effects of the tax rate on an unchanged value, not the overall tax bill increase on that home with an increased appraisal value factored in. This is grossly misleading. In the case of the city, it's been said that taxes on a $100,000 home would only increase by $9 as a result of the proposed tax rate increase. But when you factor in the 8 percent assessment increase, the city taxes alone increased by over $57 if we assume the House started at $100,000 and increased by 8 percent. If the tax rate is unchanged from last year, the increase would be about $48. To extend that effect across the board, if all taxing bodies adopted unchanged tax rates, that homeowner's tax bill would increase by over $200. For more misleading language, we don't need to look much further than a couple weeks ago when the mayor spoke to the weekly Victoria Partnership Meeting hosted by the VEDC. The local paper states, "He said he doesn't think the city needs to raise its taxes because the total growth in taxes paid may generate enough revenue to start budgeting for a 10-year plan to cover street maintenance." So what he's saying is, we don't need to raise taxes because total growth in taxes paid. Let me repeat. We don't need to raise taxes because of growth in taxes. Okay. This is a typical linguistic device used to confuse the rate, the tax rate, with tax revenue and tax bills. While it is tax revenue that should come to mind when we reference taxes as it relates to changes in our tax bills. The tax rate should be the result of budgeted revenue needs, not an open-ended driver for tax revenue. After a tax rate has been enacted for fiscal year, it becomes completely arbitrary in the context of the next year's budget because the equation has changed. However, it's employed as a useful tool for increasing revenue under the guise of not raising taxes when you present it as a flat tax rate as a measure of your fiscal restraint. The local paper went on to say, quote, "There's a massive misunderstanding," Palasic said during his presentation, explaining how artificially low appraisal values before the last decade kept money out of the city's budget. Officials in the past weren't honest with funds and revenues. With more tax revenue expected, Palasic said, now we're finally catching up. These statements assert that the city is somehow entitled to the funds that would be generated by a combination of increased appraisals and unchanged tax rate. However, I contend there should be no automatic tax increases, ever. Every budgeted dollar should be scrutinized, starting from the ground up. And when the revenue needs are established, the tax rate should be the result of dividing the needed property tax revenue by the property assessment value. In the case of this year's whopping 8 percent assessment increase, starting at last year's tax rate, is starting at an 8 percent tax increase, which doesn't exactly qualify as legitimate baseline budgeting. If you insist on starting at a particular baseline tax rate, it needs to be the effective tax rate, which you're legally bound to calculate in order to inform the public of which tax rate would collect the same revenue from properties taxed in both years. It should be noted, the effective tax rate allows you to collect a revenue increase on new property, which is a great way to peg tax collections to tax base growth. After all, we're told that our economic development policies are supposed to provide tax relief to current taxpayers by way of growing tax base. Additionally, the statement about artificially low appraisals keeping revenue out of the budget is an admission that the city has advocated its responsibility to collect enough revenue to maintain infrastructure. It also strongly implies the false premise that the city didn't have the power to increase its tax rate in order to collect more revenue. I must respectfully ask, who among you may have advocated reducing tax rates for years but are now blaming past officials for lack of revenue? Let me preemptively state that because roads is not a valid rebuttal to my argument that tax collections are being deceptively portrayed to the public. No amount of public need justifies making misleading statements about how money is extracted from us. All I ask is that you own your duties and quit blaming the CAD for tax increases. Thank you. For more information, you can go to Victoria Property Tax Revolt on Facebook. Thank you.
If anyone else wants to come talk about anything at all? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizens' communications, and we'll move into ordinances and items.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending Section 1328(a) and Section 1394(a) of the Victoria City Code related to municipal utilities and services, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a second and third reading.
Move or adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Item C2 is an ordinance directing the city manager to execute a contract of sale to transfer approximately 102.2 square feet of right-of-way at 115 Idlewood owned by Daniel Witty in exchange for $203.57 and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion?
Where is this location, more or less?
There's a map.
It's in Tanglewood subdivision, but it's, you know, where there's a big screen called Girls or something.
The two-step, right behind.
Two-step back behind there, but it's Tanglewood subdivision.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. C3.
Item C3 is an ordinance amending Section 24-86 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees for special events, to add fees for parade permitting, barricade rental, and staff setup, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
Move or adopt?
Second.
Motion and a second, and I see a question.
We set a new version of this?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Explain that, I couldn't find the changes.
Yes, absolutely, I can explain that. You'll remember that at the last meeting, we made a last-minute substitution that changed some of the formatting within that last section, 24-86, the last section of 24-86, in order to specifically clarify that the damaged or lost barricade fee would not apply if the city set up the barricades. I said at that time that the revised version of the ordinance would be included in the electronic version of the packet that would be posted online. And then we mistakenly did not include the revised version. And so that's why that revised version was sent out at a later date to all council members as well as the media to make sure that everyone had the correct version. We did vote on the revised version last time, so the revised version that you were sent is the version under consideration tonight.
Any further discussion? Okay. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. So we'll do the consent agenda items first, and then we'll go back and do two and four.
All right. There are four items remaining on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved with a single vote. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of June 3, 2014. D3, which is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the software maintenance agreement for record management system software and the computer-aided dispatch system used by the Victoria Police and Fire Departments from Sun Guard Public Sector of Lake Mary, Florida, in the amount of $120,082 and declaring an effective date. D5, which is a resolution awarding the 2013-2014 Storm Sewer Line Cleaning Project to Clean Serve LLC of Pearland, Texas, for their low bid of $140,930, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And D6 is an authorize, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Victoria Engineering Incorporated, doing business as urban engineering, for engineering services for downtown water and sanitary sewer replacement Phase IV, Projects 1A, 2A, and 3A, in the amount of $486,362.29 and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Approve items from the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item's passed, and we'll go, let's do D2.
Sure. D2 is a resolution awarding the fiscal year 2013-2014 through fiscal year 2015-2016 annual audits to Harrison Waldrop and Uheric LLP in an amount not to exceed $47,500 in the initial year, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to engage Harrison Waldrop and Uheric LLP for auditing services, and declaring an effective date.
Let's get a motion first.
Make the motion.
Second. Okay. Is there any question, Ms. Elise?
Okay. I know this is a three-year contract with a two-year extension on there.
Yes.
There was a clause back here that I have a question on because it's 47.5 for the first year and 48 for each consecutive year after that.
Correct.
Then there's a clause down here that says that any additional fees based on our standard hourly rate, and that's in last page, I think it is, page seven.
On page seven of their engagement.
Of their engagement letter.
Correct.
First, second, third, third paragraph, the very last line. And it's talking about the additional rate in case they have to go out there and get additional, I guess, somebody else to help with the audit.
That's probably causes in there if they have to hire, or if it's outside of the scope.
Right, right. My question is, does any amount come to us or just a certain amount like we do with your contracts? Anything above the 48? Is it going to come to us? Because it says it has to be approved. Any additional amounts have to be approved by the city council. I'm just questioning the value. Is there a dollar value that you put to that amount?
I'd say definitely over $25,000 if it were an increase, which I wouldn't expect.
No, no. What I was going to say, is it going to be less than $25,000?
Yeah, I don't.
Or any amount going to come to us?
I'm pretty sure we've never increased the audit contract over the stated approved amount.
Ms. Elise, in the prior.
No, it's never happened, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, well, unite, storm my thunder. But with that said, if it's a major dollar, definitely we'll come back. My assumption is the city manager will bring it back for council for that item. But it has to be a major item, like using a specialist or something like that. But I don't see that in the for future at all. But we have engaged Harrison Waldrop Uheric to do other items besides the audit at the same time they're doing the audit.
Oh.
So in that case, it'd be a separate agreement, a different scope in itself, not pertaining to the audit.
Okay.
So that'd be a separate contract dealing with a different issue.
Oh, okay.
So, but in reference to that audit itself, if we use a specialist or something like that, that they don't have the expertise on hand, they have to hire somebody out, we will come forward because there'll probably be quite a bit of number.
Yeah, I'm just saying because of the length of the contract.
Sure, no, absolutely. But again, you're right when your first comment, we never had crossed that bridge. But if we do, definitely the wise thing is to come before council and get that looked at, because that'd be the wise thing to do.
Okay. I just, that was my question.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on D2 while we're here? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. D4.
D4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated for resident project representative services for the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant Off-Stripe Utilities and Access Road Projects in an amount not to exceed $497,000 and declaring an effective date.
Do you want to get a motion first? Yeah, we didn't have a motion, did we?
We didn't have a motion. I make a motion.
Just get it on the floor.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, discussion. Ms. Elise, did you have some on this one?
No, I just needed to pull it because I have to vote against it.
Oh, okay, understood, understood. Anyone have any questions about it? You got the resume of the gentleman, I know, so.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All those in favor, Emmett? You look like you have a question.
Did you say a resume? Because I didn't see a resume.
Yeah, there was a resume.
For the gentleman that's going to be the project manager.
It was sent out separately. Mr. Alvarez.
I didn't get it, but that's okay. We've talked about it already.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive qualification, so anyway, for what it's worth. But, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution awarding the City of Victoria landfill final cover, perimeter road and drainage structure construction and geosynthetics installation project to EISG Incorporated of Houston, Texas, for their low bid of $2,749,790.27, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we approve E1.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. E2?
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the fleet manages, fleet management and maintenance agreement with First Vehicle Services Incorporated to allow modified fees for fleet management and maintenance services for a target cost of $1,117,101 and declaring an effective date.
Move or adopt?
E2?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on E2?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The way this was presented, it was misleading, and I just wanted clarification on that. Because when I looked at it, I said, it's going up another million dollars? But it's not. It's the difference between what was, and I had to go back and pull the old contract and find out that the difference was like $28,000, $29,000. So that was something that, you know, that kind of was misleading, and I thought it would be easier, you know, if it had been presented, okay, this is what we have and this is what they're asking now, okay? And then on Section 10.09, for the hours of operation, the word shall was struck and the word may for the operating hours. I was thinking, why not will? I mean, may sounds like it's, they might open, but, you know, I'd.
Yeah, that, standard legal construction is to use the word shall and may to differentiate between obligatory and permissive. The word will is confusing and it's ambiguous. If I say that somebody is going, that somebody will do something, that might be merely a statement of fact, or it might be a requirement that they do it, or it might be permissive. And so standard legal construction when we're writing contracts is to use either the word shall or may.
It just sounds confusing.
So they may fix our vehicles?
They may fix our vehicles. They have our permission.
They have performance standards they have to meet.
That is a little bit, just have to chuckle at that, the lawyer, you know.
That's, I'll take the heat for that one.
I think we're in good hands, but anyway.
It also leaves us a little bit of room. If we want to change the hours a little bit, we can, because we may, instead of, in other words, we can do it, we don't have to do it.
Does that allow us to have them come out after hours?
Yes.
Does that give us that?
Per contract, we can call them out weekends whenever we need to.
With the word may?
Fire truck.
Okay. Okay. Then that clarifies it.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Item E3 is a resolution ratifying the city manager's execution of the emergency manhole replacement contract for the replacement of a sanitary sewer manhole located at 6811 US Highway 59 North with Mercer Construction Company of Edna, Texas, for their quote of $99,828 and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there a discussion on E3?
Is the job complete already? Because it seems like it should have been.
The job is complete, yes.
Good, okay.
Good. All, we didn't vote, we got a motion, I'm sorry. Lost my train of thought there. No further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item passes. Thank you, Lynn. All right. No city manager reports, but we do have a planning session for budget.
Start where we stopped last time with the Human Resources Director Cheryl Marsaljohn. She's going to talk about the proposed pay program.
This is the part, maybe we'll come back. This is the part to listen to.
I brought an extra copy tonight just in case you did not bring your, since that was a couple of weeks ago. It's okay, no problem.
Thank you for waiting another week or two, however long it was.
That's okay. I wish East would have pulled it out for us, but that's all right. They did good, no matter what the end result was, so proud of them. Melissa Elise, thank you, Amy, appreciate that. Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to finalize, if you will, some of the discussion and the presentations that we've done so far on our budget work sessions. I will be talking about personnel overview and then wrapping it up with the proposed pay plan. When we began this journey, we did talk about enhancing livability of our community. So I'm hoping tonight to share with you what we have been doing in way of enhancing livability for our community. And I think we do that with our greatest asset, and that, of course, is our City of Victoria employees. Last couple of weeks with regards to the budget workshops, we've seen a lot of numbers, a lot of graphs, a lot of charts. I thought it was important to put together some pictures of those greatest assets, our people, doing the job that enhances livability day in and day out for our community and the citizens who live in our community. So some of these are just some snapshots of current employees working in the community, doing the job. Those are some of our recruitment efforts that we've been doing. So just a snapshot, if you will. So, just a snapshot, if you will. Also, I thought it might be a little helpful, you know, coming from HR, it's not all about numbers for us, sometimes it's about storytelling. So, how do we make a difference, or how do our employees make a difference? And I came across this story in my career a while back about the tell of the three brick layers. I don't know if any of you have heard it, so just please entertain me as I go through this quick story. But there's three brick layers. When asked, what are you doing, the first brick layer replies, I'm laying bricks. The second brick layer is asked the same question, and he answers, I'm putting up a wall. And then the third brick layer, when asked the same question, what are you doing, responds with pride in his voice, I'm building a cathedral. I think this short story sort of illustrates what we find in our employees. Three areas that I tend to see summarized in our workforce is those positive can-do attitudes day in and day out. What do we need to see happen? And working at making it, so those positives, we can do this, how do we do it? And we challenge ourselves day in and day out to achieve that. Also, pride in the workforce. We know that folks come to work for municipalities, for that calling, if you will, and that public service, so we definitely see pride in the work that our employees do for our community. And then also, I think it illustrates that ability to see the bigger picture. Now, all of these things are high expectations that we have of our workforce, and so we establish those expectations, but I think you can also see it day in and day out with what we achieve for the community. So, opening up then with our personnel review is talk a little bit about our city attrition. Our city attrition for fiscal year 1112, you can see our attrition or our turnover rate was right about 22%. We did drop down in fiscal year 1213 to right about 17%, so we were able to hang on to some roles, if you will, and retract and retain. For fiscal year 1314, and this is an annualized number, we're jumping back up into about 24% of an attrition rate. This really speaks to the tight labor market that we are living in and dealing with. You know, the Victoria community, I think every employer in our community is dealing with the same thing around retaining, attracting a workforce. So, our attrition rate, we still sort of see it hovering around that. The annualized rate, or year-to-date rate, excuse me, is around 16% for our turnover. That was as the end of May. This sort of gives you a department attrition view. For fiscal year 1112 is in green, blue is fiscal year 12, and then fiscal year 13 annualized is in the black number there. And you can see, I've got my pointer over here, we've got environmental services, which is primarily our solid waste driver turnover, as well as we've got some police attrition that I know the chief has talked about. And then public works attrition is, again, some of our heavy equipment operators or our maintenance folks, and those tend to be, again, very tight labor market conditions, especially with regards to competing for oil and gas, or competing with oil and gas industry for those positions. We have seen some positives over time, especially in our parks department. We were at one time 50% turnover in our parks, and we've really worked to get that down, and so we're looking good there, so.
Outside jobs, if to work outside.
Yes, sir.
Those tend to be a little harder to fill around.
Exactly, yeah. The labor-intensive jobs are very hard to fill. But some of the separation details as it relates to those attrition numbers, the top three areas that remain around our turnover is, of course, resignations, dismissals, and then retirements. And so, you can see the last three fiscal years with regards to sort of how those numbers are shaping up. And then the total number, if you will, just the raw data number of how many employees have left, is over there in the 123 in fiscal year 1112, 97 for 1213, excuse me, and 134 so far annualized. That's, that's an annualized number for fiscal year 1314. So, some of the resignations, and that's what we would zero in on, if you will, around, okay, what are the resignations telling us? And some of the examples that we have is just some folks returning back to school, of course, better job opportunities, which that might mean, again, better pay opportunities for them, personal reasons, family situations come up, and they're resigning to move forward. And then we even have some folks that move away from the City of Victoria area, and so we have those listed in resignations as well. Good news, however, is that as we continue to want to be an employer of choice in our community, we're out there working our career fairs, we're out there recruiting actively for our positions. We've got employees, I know Public Works has got a great person that is out there recruiting for us on a daily basis, and we actually hired a couple that he's brought into the office to apply. So, this gives you a number of how many new hires that we have come in. Now, keep in mind, this doesn't correlate with the number of vacancies because we constantly, well, in some roles, we have constant turnover, so we might have two or three new hires within one year for that particular role, just because another opportunity might come up for that individual that looks more enticing, and so they're quick to jump to that opportunity and not stay with the City of Victoria. But I am pleased to see these numbers go up. We've been working hard to really advertise our positions. We're at the table with some of these job fairs alongside oil and gas and petrol chemical industry, and a lot of people are given the City of Victoria a second glance as far as an opportunity to come and work for. One other thing I wanted to, to let you be aware of is sort of what happens when we do have an employee leave. Even though we have a budgeted position sitting there, it's not necessarily that we just automatically backfill behind that position. We've been challenged by the city manager as department heads to really look at our organization and make sure that we're working efficient and effective with what we do and the services that we provide. And so, we have what's considered sort of a reorg challenge process at times with regards to open positions. So, we'll look at, do we just want to automatically backfill the position? What is the need? What can we do differently perhaps with regards to the way we've been working in the past? And sometimes it will conduct or have an opportunity to what we call a reorg or a reorganization of that department. Some examples of that, in public works in particular, is that we just recently went through a reorganization, we had some vacancies come up, we worked with Lynn and his staff on looking at what would be a better fit to, again, address the needs of that department and the community. And we were able to update three principal clerk positions to PW specialist and get that higher level customer service and technical skill. We also developed a customer service manager role, and so they have more interface with regards to the customers on all facets of public works. And then you see the reduced three street positions there for the street sweeping program. Another example is in parks and recreation. We reduced two maintenance positions from the total personnel. We developed one assistant director position. In the past, we used to have two. We developed then a park superintendent to focus more on the, the parks maintenance side. We updated a principal clerk to administrative assistant to give better flow with regards to those services. And then we also looked at developing sort of a tier, if you will, of a parks worker one, two, and then a parks worker three position. And then in police, we had two non-licensed administrative roles retired this past year, and rather than just automatically backfilling those positions, again, the chief looked at what could be optimized with regards to those positions. And even though these didn't reduce necessarily, at least in police department, didn't reduce the total number of headcount, it did shift the workload from a standpoint of administrative back to perhaps patrol. So, just some examples of, we don't automatically take, an opening is to backfill and find another person there. We really do look at trying to optimize the workflow and what we can do differently. So, with that said, this sort of summarizes our total budgeted personnel numbers. This is total budgeted over fiscal year 2006 all the way up to what we're proposing for fiscal year 2015. You'll see some spikes in there. For fiscal year 2008, that's whenever we added the roughly 11 positions to the station four, so you sort of see a jump there in personnel. You also see a reduction then in fiscal year 2010, and that was whenever we had sort of that downturn of the marketplace, and we reduced some frozen positions that we had identified. Fiscal year 2015, going into fiscal year 2015, we're ending the year with 613 budgeted positions. For fiscal year 2015, with an example of those reorganizations, we're at 606. However, you're going to need to add those 12 positions for the new fire station, so that gets our budgeted personnel number at 618. But I just sort of wanted to draw that attention to that 606 number because we are doing what I think it takes to challenge ourselves and make sure that we're working smarter, if you will, not harder. Obviously, some technology improvements have helped us with regards to that, but overall, I think it's showing that we're just not trying to keep stagnant with regards to our total budgeted personnel. This is sort of a, an interesting chart to show you our years of service. I think it speaks to the population of new folks that we have onboard, zero to four years. We have about 46% of our population that hit that category, so a lot of our newer workforce, if you will. I think also it illustrates to us that this side of the pie chart, we really need to be working on not only the attraction side, but also the retention and the knowledge transfer of these employees, especially those that are, you know, 15, 19 on up, years of service. So, but putting it in this view sort of just said, okay, we've got somewhat of a younger workforce that we're dealing with, and I don't think that's uncustomary to other industries as well. That sort of wraps up the personnel picture, if you will. I wanted to spend just a few charts in talking about labor market. Unemployment rates, we've been talking about that, and you might have heard, I think VEDC has been communicating, as well as some others, that the May unemployment for our area of Victoria County is 3.7. This is as of April 2014, is the blue there, is 3.8 unemployment rate, and that was for the Victoria City area. Compared to last year was 5.0. So, this really tells us that, you know, there's not a whole lot of employees out there looking for a job. Pretty much what we're dealing with are those folks that are already working and maybe want to change. Also, in Texas, you can see how we compare with Texas from April 2013 to April 2014, and then the United States unemployment rates. So, if you are looking for a job, this is definitely the place to come, okay? And come to work for the City of Victoria as well.
Is considered full employment?
I'm sorry?
What is considered full employment?
Full employment, as far as our personnel? I'm not sure I follow you, Mr. Jalapagos.
What is considered full employment? Is that 6% nationally?
It's more than 3.8.
Yeah.
Basically, probably more than 3.8.
Yes, sir. That's the point I was trying to make.
Yes, sir.
We consider this full employment right now. I'm not sure what...
Well, no, there's a national figure, they say full employment is 6% and I believe was a number. Four, okay.
Four, four and a half, something like that.
I can go back and look at that, I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
It's unimportant. I could probably Google that.
Yeah, I think 3.8 would say it's, it's there. This also is just some statistics comparing May of 2013 average hourly wages for the different Victoria area regions, and I pulled this out of the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics for our area and compared that with San Antonio area and Houston area for similar type positions. So, you can see sort of a graph there of May 2013 average hourly wages for those three areas. And now, keep in mind that the way the BLS breaks up the Victoria area is consisting of Calhoun, Goliad, and Victoria County. But you can see sort of just similar rows then that I would compare these positions with internally to the City of Victoria, and I pulled in the May 2014 average hourly wages. So, an office clerk general for the Victoria area is 1259. For the City of Victoria, which is comparable to our principal clerk position, is right at 1162. If we move forward with the proposed pay increase of, of an average 3% for our PFP, that 1162 goes to 1198, and these are averages. Same thing with construction laborers, and that sort of matches up with the street maintenance worker that we have in-house. So, you can see sort of what those ranges are as of May 2013 and sort of where we're sitting right now. Street maintenance workers or parks maintenance workers tend to be our lowest level paying positions within the city. And then you also have a comparison there of just firefighter, this is firefighters, and then police officers. This is not including our senior police officers, it's just those police officers in general. But you can see that I think the, the work that we have done with regards to our competitiveness of our wages with police and fire are showing that we're in line there. And then our truck drivers, and this is really where I, I feel for our solid waste department and public works, is those CDL drivers. Those are hot commodities, and they job jump based on who's going to pay the highest salary. And so, you can see sort of where we're comparing with that. A couple of things about CDL drivers. I know you're aware that we instituted a, a new hire incentive plan, and that was to help with regards to some of our police roles, but also our CDL drivers. It's because we did find in the marketplace that sign-on bonuses or even bonuses from an annual standpoint, they're really offering some additional incentive packages associated with the base salary to attract these type of positions, so we're trying to stay competitive with regards to that, which I think we're doing a good job.
So, you said that some of the private side employers are doing that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Offering the, okay. I just want to make sure I understood you.
Yes, sir. Proposed pay plan, this sort of wraps up then the summary of the cost of, in general fund, an average 3% pay for performance. And then also, the step pay program, which we incorporated last year, got approved to move forward with, that would be an average 3% for fire and PD as well, so you see the total cost there. So, the total cost for general fund for both of those is roughly about 817,000. All other funds for the average 3% pay for performance would be roughly about that 214,000, so a total there. A little over a million. And any questions?
I have a couple real quick.
Okay.
Going back to the, the citywide view of years of service, the pie chart.
Yes, sir.
It'd be interesting to see the age demographic.
I actually do have that, I just didn't put a graph to it, but I can get that to you if you'd like to.
My concern is, of course, about half of our, I don't know how young that half of that staff is versus how many are getting close to retirement, and has we start seeing more retirement from senior staff, possibly, let's hope not.
Well, let me share some numbers with you right quick, if you'll just bear with me. Let me get it in front of me. As far as the average or percent of age, we have age, and this is as of the end of May, age 18 to 24, our workforce is about 9% in that age group. Age 25 to 34 is about 30%. Age 35 to 44 is about 23%. Age 45 to 54 is about 20, excuse me, 25%. Age 55 to 68, 13%. And I can send that graph to you, Mr. Alvarez. As far as eligibility for retirement, currently, we have 108 that are eligible for retirement, active full-time, 108 folks total, and that would be anyone that has that 20-plus years or five years plus age 60 eligibility.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the slide 13, page 13, the bar graph that goes from '06 through '15, there you go. I guess, so 2014 budgeted positions, the current budget has 613, and then the proposed 2015 is 606. Of course, if you add the 12, it goes to 618. So, actually, current is 2014. Of that 613, how many vacancies do we have today? Do you happen to know that?
I believe the latest report I had on our vacancy was, total vacant positions was 50 positions. That's as of today, or as of yesterday, excuse me.
Five, zero?
Five, zero.
Now, I know, like, the biggest are the areas like Lynn's department, Public Works, Water, those, okay.
Now, that might be, let me double check. I don't want to count part-time in regards to that number, because we do have some part-times added in here.
I have 50, Sheriff, for full-time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have that breakdown by department?
Uh-huh.
We were, I know in some of the previous presentations, they gave us some of their numbers. Lynn gave us some numbers in his, but, yeah, I seen it all on one page, would be kind of nice. And when you move from 613 to 606, are those, see, what's the difference there? Seven? Is that pretty much probably straight out of that 50?
That's pretty much...
It goes back to what y'all said earlier about trying to remove positions, it's Goes back to what y'all said earlier about trying to remove positions, it's just don't.
Yes, sir, that's pretty much these positions right here, yes, sir.
So they're vacant, and you just, after reevaluation, realize, we're just going to eliminate the position. You're not firing anybody, because there's no one in it.
That's right, we just consider it what we call a reorganization, where we really challenge and look at those things, and typically, we see these with positions that have been there a while, you know, not the utility maintenance worker positions, but positions that might, for example, I think it was a deputy director position or assistant director position in, in Public Works that we re-looked at, and came up with the customer service manager role.
Changed things around.
Saved salary money, but not a FTE number.
Exactly.
There was salary savings there, so.
So moving those seven, excuse me, you're in the low forties. Historically, what would that look like? That's, that's artificially high now, just because of the competitive environment we're in. Ten years ago, I guess you were in that position, was it half that maybe, or, are you willing to give me an approximation, you don't want to?
No.
Okay.
Our turnover rate used to run probably ten to twelve percent.
I was going to say, I think historically, I would, ten percent is what I've seen, but I can, I can go back, I'm sure we've got some historical data to look at.
Well, I don't want, I don't want to make work necessarily, I, I would, it's safe to say it's higher than average.
Yes.
We could all probably agree to that, for the reasons you showed us.
And you'll find municipalities, when the private sector's doing really well, municipalities' turnover rate's going to be higher, because people move into the private sector, but when the economy slows and the private sector's not doing well, then you'll find that they move back into local government, and our turnover rate's lower, and people aren't moving because there's not jobs out there. So if you look at police and public works, that, that totals thirty-seven vacancies out of those fifty, so our other departments vacancy numbers very low to nothing in a lot of departments. Those are the two, they're carrying, and they have for the, probably the last two years carried the most vacancies.
The library doesn't have any vacancies, I don't believe, so.
Right now, we only have, yeah, one vacancy, but I think we've got somebody that we've hired for that position, they just haven't, you know, signed on as of yet, but. And that, you know, that happens throughout the year, you'll see maybe one or two vacancies in those smaller departments, and then, you know, we tend to not have any problems hiring in the library, a lot of applicants for that specific department, but even the other departments, we tend to, to get, right now, we have principal clerk positions open, and we have thirty-eight applicants, I think, in those positions, so. It's, it's really those maintenance worker, equipment operators, those are tough because of who, CDL drivers, that's tough of who we're competing with for those positions.
And that's one of the positions you started, the little bonus hiring incentive?
Exactly.
Was those in the police officers, yeah? Okay.
For clarification purposes, you said we have six hundred and thirteen positions budgeted, but we have fifty vacancies, so we have five hundred and sixty-three employees?
Roughly, yes, ma'am, full-time.
And we are going to budget six hundred and eighteen, that's another fifty-five.
Well, remember, these are budgeted positions, so I don't know that you can correlate.
I understand, but when we're looking at the budget, these fifty-five people are included in the budget, correct? And the three percent pay for performance is in there for fifty-five people that we don't have at this point? Okay?
It's an average.
We assume we're going to hire them.
Right, I understand, but I'm just saying, you know, right now, we've had a whole year of six hundred and thirteen positions, and we're halfway through, or three-quarters of the way through the budget, and we have fifty vacancies, so there should be some money somewhere is going back to the general fund.
Well, Ms. Elise.
There will be.
Yeah.
Do we ever see those figures? I don't think we ever have.
Yeah, that's where, well, that's.
Well, I'd like to see just what the personnel figure that goes back into the general fund, please, from all the departments.
We don't budget a hundred percent for all, it's, police is ninety-eight percent.
Okay.
So they're not all budgeted, but. Do you have any further for Ms. Marchumani? Because we can certainly talk about any topic at all with respect to the budget.
Yeah, I didn't, if we want to do Lynn first, I just had a general remark about the budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, and one thing about the budget, I mean, and I hope the public knows, you know, we have a council, I really believe that everybody here is trying to do what's in the best interest of the public, even though maybe everybody, we don't all necessarily have identical ideas of what that might look like, but my, my concern this year would be, you know, I think the sales tax to me is the sale, is the canary in the mine, we have, you know, that sales tax that are tepid this year, you know, I've been out talking to folks, and one business owner was telling me, he said that money is really tight, and he says he doesn't know people are burying it in their backyards or just holding on to it. He doesn't know, but it hasn't been making its way through his business, and he's concerned, and I, I think a lot of folks are concerned. And, so my, my thought, and I think better to say it on the upfront, is that, you know, I think that we ought to shoot for the effective tax rate this year, and I know we have a tremendous amount of needs, and that we have streets, and I know we have sweeping, and I, and I'm certain, and especially, my thought is that, is because, I guess we're about to hear Lynn speak, and we might be really in a bind to, to raise water rates, I mean, we may have no choice, because everybody wants their sewer to work, nobody wants to, that's not something you can neglect, so we may have our back against the wall with that issue. And so my concern would be a double whammy in, as far as tax increases this year, and so I'd like to see the effective tax rate. You know, I think, you know, we've been blessed in many ways here locally, but I think nationally, you know, the GDP was negative last quarter. I think there's real signs of sluggish economy on a national level. I don't think we've addressed our national issues as far as going deeper and deeper into debt as a country. I, I'll be honest, I think we're in a slow slide as a country, and that's going to have effects, impact on Victoria. I think sales tax, I think, being tepid, especially when you consider the increase in, in gas, increase in food, and yet, our sales taxes are down. I mean, I think that people says that people are pretty, a little bit skittish, and I can't think of, in spite of everything that we need to do and should do, I can't think of a better thing to do than to allow the taxpayer to hold on as much money as possible in the coming year. I really think that the taxpayer this year is going to need every penny they can to keep above, be able to pay their, their bills, be able to pay for food and gas, and, and for all their, you know, their discretionary responsibilities. I, my belief, you know, I could be all wet, but I believe it's going to be a very difficult year, and I think next year this time is going to be much more difficult than it is today. So from my conscience, not questioning anybody else's motives, because I, I know everybody has a good rationale, and very justified reasons for what they think, that's where I'm coming from, and that's where my heart's at, and at least wanted to, I think it's fair to say on the upfront, not wait till we're down to the last three readings of a budget and give my, my, my perspective, so. Just one more thing, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, for the, for the, for the public, if they don't know what the effective tax rate is, it means rolling back the tax rate to the point that the city does not take any additional tax revenue this year than we did the year before, so.
Is this, this quiet? Oh, there we go.
You want to say something?
No, go ahead, Jesse. That's you, but go ahead.
I mean, it's just we have plenty of time, and we don't have to.
It's always nicer for staff putting a budget together when we bring back that budget in August, if we know what majority of council wants to be on that tax rate, so.
Amen.
Well, what I'm going to say is, the pay for performance, and that's coming from experience, not everybody gets it, okay? So I think the three percent should be across the board and not pay for performance, because like, you know, Mr. Hagan said, if we don't give everybody a raise, and we are going to increase their insurance, and they have all these other bills that they have to pay, they're going to be further back than what they were a year ago.
Ma'am? We've not brought you the health insurance yet, so I don't want employees thinking we're going to increase insurance.
Well, I mean, normally it happens that way, so something else is going to eat up the raise.
It did last year, yes, ma'am, it did last year, but I don't want our employees thinking, okay, we've already made that decision.
But, you know, even just gas prices, food prices, everything is going to eat up that three percent, so they're not going to be in any better position than they were last year, is what I'm saying. So, the pay for performance, I've never agreed with, because we did the pay for performance last year, why can't we do a cross-the-board this year?
It's just all dollars.
I mean, if we have it budgeted, why can't we do it just across the board? That's what my concern is, you know, is my question, because I think it would be, you know, beneficial to everybody, and we're having trouble keeping people, and, you know, I, I'm just saying from my own personal experience.
We've done across-the-board before.
We have.
It's been on and off, just depends on the current situation.
Depends on the year, yes, sir.
I kind of like the department heads having their discretion, because I don't know their people. Some people deserve more than others, I suppose, but, but, I mean, we've done it before. How many, when's the last year, do you remember when we did across-the-board?
Oh, we did the cross, we, we did not this year in fourteen, but we did them across-the-board in thirteen and twelve, and then after that, somebody's going to have to help me.
We did, the last time we did it was fiscal year twelve.
Twelve.
Thirteen, we did a PFP.
PFP, okay.
Yeah, that, that sounds better.
So the budget before last, okay.
In eleven and twelve, we did across-the-board.
You could probably fit.
You know, because our attrition rate is so high, I mean, I'm talking, I mean, three percent is not a lot to some people, but to some people, it's a difference between them making a decision to stay or not.
It's highly possible, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's going to change, you know, the figures, if you already have it budgeted, I'm just saying, you know, for the people's.
It's the difference about slightly over two hundred thousand dollars.
So if, if I understand it right, the average is three, the max is five percent?
Four.
Four? So anywhere from zero to four, and it's a discretion of the department heads?
Based on job performance.
Based on job performance, right, right. So somebody does a better job, theoretically, they would get four percent, maybe someone doing less than a better job, and I'm choosing my words carefully, could be two percent or one percent. I suppose, I don't know if it would be meaningful to do one percent across the board and then divvy up the rest in merit, I don't know, that's splitting some hairs, words, not meaningful.
It's not, it's not.
It's one or the other.
When you're only doing three percent, you might as well do one or the other and not try to split. Now, if you were, you could afford a lot more, then yeah, you do, but not at that level.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, because of the attrition, the cost of living and everything else, I think three percent, you know, shouldn't affect us that bad.
I'm in favor of pay-for-performance. I think you have to give department heads the ability to recognize those people that are doing things correctly and going above and beyond, and the way I've done it in the past is, you know, ranking out employees within a department, and it incentivizes some that want to continue along a path of growth to see what the standard is for getting a bigger raise and understanding what the requirements are for that as someone that wants to just coast, so. I'm more for pay-for-performance as a method.
I guess it depends, you know, and I, I understand the pay-for-performance is that sometimes you have a pay-for-performance setup, and maybe staff can educate me on how we do it. Sometimes I've been in organizations where you say, okay, we've got pay-for-performance, but there's only this much money to go, so you have to, even if every, let's say everybody did great, everybody did above and beyond, you can only give an increase to so many people, and even if everybody's great, you're going to have to somehow come up with a, a way to discern who those people are who actually get the limited amount of funds that exist. So you really, sometimes the way, depending on how it's set up, you know, you're forced to make tough decisions, and sometimes good people may not, just because, you know, you've got to flip a coin, say, who's the better of those two?
And we don't do that.
Okay, so I'm asking, that's really a question.
Yes, sir, we don't do that, it's, it's, there's a performance, each department head rates their employees, and then we total the scores, HR totals the scores and decides on the raise based on the range that we've decided, so.
So there's not like a directive to say.
No, there's not.
You know, you can't, I mean, you're going to have to make a decision, you can't just rate all these people three.
That's right, that's right, no, they can't, and then those, those are all reviewed by human resources staff when they come in, they're looking for those anomalies or if there's problems, so. Oh, sure, sure.
And that discussion's still based on, can we afford to do it?
All things, right?
And I, I have some ideas, but I'm not ready to share them yet, so.
We have plenty of time.
From the PFP?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Across-the-board.
Okay.
And I'm.
Budgeted in general.
But I will make sure it doesn't drag on till August to give it to you. I'll make sure to give you my thoughts before then.
It's, it would just be nice at some point earlier rather than later to have the consensus. What's, what's a majority of council going to want to do, especially on the tax rate? You know, is a majority of council going to want to be at the rollback rate or be at the effective tax rate, you know?
And that would help a lot.
It does.
Because, you know, numbers are numbers, and we can, with Charmel deciding, of course, but we can come up with various options, if that's the range, it'd be nice to go from this range down to, okay, where exactly the tax rate? And we can make several different options from that point and let you decide, you know, even go to the extent of the one-time, you know, theory time. So there's a bunch of ranges you can do, numbers can be worked out, adjust the level of risk you want to take, that's all. So it'd be nice to have that, you know, before July.
I'm working very hard to get it done next week or two.
Well, just tell me what you want. Tax, tax rate, we can work that.
I don't want to just tell you effective tax rate without coming with some proposed solutions to get there.
Well, that'd be great, but I say, in the meantime, I can be working on some other options that, well, maybe we can meet and happen, come up with the same thing, too. Because I'm, and when I do those, I do less risk to a high risk, and as Charmel knows, we go from that point, you know? But it'd be nice just to have that feel, what the, what feeling y'all looking at as to, is it effective tax rate? If it is, fine, I mean, but at least I have something to target and come up with an option, that'd be great to know, I mean.
Well, let me, let me interject real quick there, because I do feel that this budget is really, literally more than in past years, a copy of last year's, and then you've very clearly told us, this is what's new, the road program. So saying the effective tax rate is saying no raises, no road program, that's what saying that is.
Well.
Unless we find, unless we find, you know, some other option, so I'm not ready to do that either, I'm kind of like Jeff, I still have, but I will say this, and I'll, I don't speak for council, but I'd like to see if you'll have a consensus, the rollback rate for sure, the five percent, you know, we kind of promised the public that when we straightened out, and you remember, we put it in the ordinance and all that? That's a five percent increase. What staff has proposed was about eight percent, but we don't have a certified tax rule yet, that's based upon an assumption. But I can tell you right now, absolutely, the rollback rate, that's where I'm at, or less, depending on what the next month of discussions and what I dig through finds out, so I don't know how you guys feel. Rollback is five percent.
I don't want to go above that, and I don't want to come in under that.
Yeah.
Try and get to effective, but I, I want some, I just need some time to get my proposals together and stuff that I can present to other council members on the dais here, and.
One thing to keep in mind, I know it's my help y'all in your thinking what to do, is that, yes, we say effective tax rate, it does bring in the same amount of money a slasher, with the exception of, you get an increase, you know, of the new values coming on, on board, so keep in mind, it's not, it's not for dollar-dollar, you're going to get an increase in revenue, and that's close to anywhere from four fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, so just make sure you understand that, that's not, you're starting scratch. And I think the mayor's pointed out that in last week or two weeks ago presentation, you know, we can do the effective tax rate, and then we can do several different options and come into the other new programs, which you want to do, it just depends, you know, how you want to handle it, that's all it is to, pretty straightforward.
But getting to the effective tax rate, and I appreciate the fact that you're trying to find where that's going to come from, it's because when you look at last year's budget and you look at, you don't take away the new programs that we're asking for, you know, which council, the street, especially the street deal, it's, we're going to have to make some cuts, I mean, it's not, you say we can get there, and I know we can, but we're going to have to make some cuts.
What I said is that it depends on the risk council wants to take, how to get there.
Yeah, and that's.
I mean, you can, you know, if you want to go to the extent to the one-time money, that's very risky, but, I mean, there's a lot of options, it just depends how, what, what you want to do.
We don't normally take out.
No, that's what I'm saying, that would be not.
We don't normally take out one-time options.
When we present a budget, we like to be less risk, but bottom line, council has a last say-so.
That's right, if.
That, that, that's what I'm saying.
You give us the direction, and we'll.
I'm not going to fight that.
I'll set the policy and we'll implement, but if, if you're wanting to get to that effective tax rate, I'm just saying, there's going to be some cuts in some programs.
Are we still going to be able to get the, remember the twenty-five cents on the water in the sewer? Are they going to give us different proposals, or you're not going to?
Well, Lynn is prepared to talk about consequences, but are we, I'd like to finish this tax rate discussion, and, I mean, I've. And, I mean, I've got two down for the effective tax rates, if there's two more that want to be at the effective tax rate, Gilbert and I can go to work tomorrow, working on that, so.
I'd like to see the effective tax rate.
But I think, you know, it's, if we have, we're talking about it early, you're gonna give us a little bit of leeway to not scramble at the last minute to discuss these things.
That's, I appreciate it, I know Gilbert does.
Can we talk about some tax rates, the numbers? Current tax rate is fifty.
Fifty-nine ninety-six.
Fifty-nine ninety-six. Currently, you are suggesting, because there's still some number crunching, the effective tax rate would be about fifty-six eighteen.
I believe that's right.
But that may even go down possibly to fifteen or five.
Well, the number's gonna change when I get the final numbers, that's, that's how I can, that number is directly correlated with the appraised values.
I understand, but it possibly could go up or down just a pair.
Correct.
So, that, that ETR, effective tax rate, is sitting about fifty-six eight eighteen. And we are currently at fifty-nine nine six. And there's a proposal by staff, what is it?
Sixty-eighty-six.
Sixty, thirty-eight?
Eighty-six.
Sixty-eighty-six. So, I guess that's our range, right?
Well, given all the, the four major areas, I mean, if you wanna give raises, if you wanna do the full street sweep, that's what.
Sixty-eighty-six.
That's what, yeah, that's the pay raise, the street program, and the street, street sweeping.
Mr. Alvarez, do you have the rollback rate there in front of you, too?
Fifty-nine point four.
Fifty-nine four.
Fifty-nine point four.
That's the five percent.
Right.
Which is still subject.
City of Victoria rollback.
Yes, not the state, the states is eight percent, but of course, that's subject to change slightly, too, when that effective is re.
And where I'm trying to go with it is, you know, somewhere under the, between the effective and the fifty-nine, where we were, where we are currently, fifty-nine point nine six. But because of the rollback rate being at fifteen, it's gonna have to be definitely below fifty-nine point four.
Yeah. I would like to avoid any problems.
Like fifty-nine, between fifty-six eighteen to fifty-nine, you know?
I'm confident we can get below the rollback rate, it's just a matter, it becomes a choice, short of someone finding something specific, you know, it's a, it's not as much a vote about the tax rate as you want the roads or not. Yes or no to roads. I mean, that's, let's be honest, we don't, we don't get to stand at the podium and just focus on revenue, you know, they all left. We have to make the individual decisions about what expense to focus on. And those are our choices, and so, you know.
Thank you, Mayor, that, that was the other point. We're, this budget is sitting about, the general fund is sitting at about fifty-four million for next year?
Uh, fifty point.
Fifteen point two-eight million, right? General fund, we're just talking about general fund, but the, the ad valorem only brings in.
Thirteen, well, with the, with the tax rate.
Fourteen million?
It's gonna be close to fifteen.
Close to fifteen.
Fifteen million of the.
Ten percent increase, yeah.
Fifteen million.
Yeah.
Of the fifty.
Yeah.
In the general, of the fifty of the general fund.
That's correct.
Fifteen million, that's all.
It gets a lot of attention, though, don't it?
What, no, but that's why we needed, if, that's about how much percentage of the ad valorem is paying the general, into the general fund?
About twenty-six percent.
How much?
About twenty-six percent.
Twenty-six percent?
Okay, close, that's good enough.
Right, plus or minus, that's, that was my point.
Let's get wag.
There's so much other, other things driving the general fund besides just the ad valorem property tax. It's only about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent.
Of course, we pay all our debt service with it, it's very critical, it's the most stable form typically, you know, you gotta be careful, gotta remember that, we all know how sales tax fluctuates, although we did have a good month, seven percent. I bet that surprised you, Gilbert, surprised me a little, the volatility of it.
Oh, yeah.
But, right.
My assumption, when Gilbert and I start, 'cause Mr. Alvarez and Paul, I'm putting you sitting between the effective tax rate and the rollback rate, that's kinda created a few problems here. So, got three at the effective tax rate, two kinda sitting in the middle, not, not, but the street program, that new maintenance program, I assume is something that council's not interested in taking off the table.
Hope this time I wouldn't be.
So, when I, when I start looking at cuts, that's why I'm gonna go back, it's programs, it's programs.
That's, that's why I say I'm not, I wanna get to the effective tax rate, I gotta figure out in my, I don't wanna just say effective tax rate and have y'all go figure it out, I wanna see if I can find it as well. And I don't think it's fair just to drop it in your lap also.
Well, I.
Part of my duty to, to look and see if I can make some proposals and sell my ideas up here to everybody else.
And I don't wanna disagree with you, but the thing is, me and my department heads know what we're doing daily, and, and y'all have the, you're up here at the thirty thousand level making policy, you don't, I'm, no disrespect, Mr. Bocknight, but knowing what we're doing on a daily basis, and that's where I, it's, I don't mind you saying, I want this much cut, come back with areas, you know, various areas where you would recommend cutting, but I mean, I appreciate the fact you wanna look at it, but at the same time, we know what we're having to do out in the trenches every day.
Well, and I, I understand, Mr. Bocknight, I think it's a matter of cooperative effort. I, I could tell you some things that I'd be more willing to, to be interested in removing or eliminating, and what I would suggest, as you have already done to some extent, is bring us a more detailed list of options. We, we have a couple of options, street sweeping, no street program, those are options, bring more, you know, and then we'll, we'll look at them, and then perhaps, as Mr. Bocknight or any other council member will, I will look at for some things as well, I've already got a few things I'm not prepared to talk about either tonight. And you've always been welcome to work, open to working with me, that's for sure, you and Gilbert both. So, I hope every council member would avail themselves of that, and we'll come up with some things, so.
What would be the effect if we purposely put it up to the rollback rate, so it would go to the taxpayers for vote?
You just wanna have, well, they have to get a petition first, and if they do that, then it would be a ballot. Intentionally set it above the rollback.
Then the public, whom many of them clamor to have this done, or that fixed, or this provided, then they could put their vote directly to it.
Just a thought.
Well, don't, don't we have an ordinance, though? What's, what is the impact of the ordinance?
But it's still less.
The impact of the ordinance is that if we adopt a rate that is more than five percent more above the effective tax rate, then we follow the state law procedure, I'm sorry, did I?
The ordinance is five percent over the M and O side.
Thank you. Five percent over the M and O side of the effective tax rate, you're right, you're exactly right.
We battled that fight a long time ago.
Right.
The finance guys got stripped, yeah. But the effect is, if we exceed that rate, we follow the state procedure for the rollback tax rate, which is that there's a petition, that citizens have an opportunity to submit a petition, and if they meet the petition requirements within the petition time, then we schedule an election at which the public gets to vote, and if the election passes, it reduces the tax rate back to the rollback tax rate.
The reason I mention this, we all have people saying, why don't we fix this, why don't we do that? When is my street gonna get fixed, why don't we have this service or that? And it always comes down to budget time, and generally, maintenance gets it in the neck. That's what we do every year, that's one of the failures of government. Anytime there's a budget crunch, we take things that are not falling down around our ears, and we defer them or delay them till it does fall down around our ears. I just see that year after year. What if we did it, sent it to the voters? Just a thought, it's early.
Well, you'd have to vote that here.
Please?
Have to vote that here.
Yes, sir.
Or, okay.
Anyway, just, just a thought.
We have to adopt a tax rate by September thirtieth.
And then all that happens afterwards.
But it would also could force a.
And all that happens afterwards, yeah.
A rollback.
Sure.
Election. Anyway, that was my thought, but no, I don't wanna go down to the effective rate.
Rollback rate, or we're, I'm trying to.
About rollback rate, yeah.
Rollback, okay.
Rollback.
At least.
That's better to you.
I, I don't, I don't see how you guys personally can get anything out of the various opinions on the tax rate. I, I go fall back to the idea of, give us items that we can get anywhere. You know, if, if Tom doesn't wanna do any of the street sweeping and I do, well, then that's something we'll work out up here, but that's an item that we have an option to cut without just flat, you know? I don't want, don't bring back an option to close half the neighborhood parks, 'cause we could sure save some money doing that, closing them and selling them and getting to that effective tax rate, and, you know, look at, see, Colby's frowning at me back there. Please don't make that the headline, either. I don't wanna close any parks, okay? But, you know, there's a lot of choices, and there's, Gilbert used a very important word while ago, risk, some are risky. Gotta be careful, you know, so, we have plenty of time.
The whole exercise of what we're doing, I mean, hopefully, it shows the public a good faith effort on part of council to, to truly come up with a good resolution.
Well, then, what I foresee is that, and with city manager, we're gonna develop several options, maybe at the rollback and effective tax rate, and within those, we'll have several level of risk involved, and let you know, you know, at least you're aware of it, and, and then we go from there, huh? Is that what I'm hearing, I guess, is that right? That can be done. Just want August to go smooth.
Which we all have.
Yeah.
People coming to us daily, on one hand, they say, you'll want my taxes, Lord, on the other hand, they want this or that, or something else. And I'd like to see how it really played out one time, and then a resting exit last.
Be careful what you wish for.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're not talking social programs, we're talking payroll, we're talking streets, wastewater plant, we're not building a golf course named after Tom over here, or.
Heaven forbid, don't do that, everybody would never make a home on one.
The Emmett Alvarez swimming pool, or splash pad, I mean, you know, we, those quality of life items we do do are well thought out, and we're careful with that, and so, balance with everything, and patience, we're not gonna fix the roads in this budget, but we might over a ten-year period, right, Mr. Short? Okay, just good balance, so. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking too much, do y'all have any further thing to add?
Can I do a clarification on the pay program? I only heard one for, across the board, and one for a PFP.
On PFP.
Okay, I, you know, okay, so, okay, it seems like a majority wants, so that's one calculation we can leave alone.
Yeah.
So, okay. Lynn, you know, after last time, we talked about the consequences of not doing maintenance and the utility side, so Lynn has come up with some ideas and clarifications on what the consequences are.
Sure.
And as Amy's handing this out so graciously, I, I appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation early about the tax rate. It does make it a lot easier to bring back a budget to everybody, so, that's nice.
Okay, thank you, I'll try to be brief. Just a week or so ago, staff brought before you a recommendation for water and wastewater rate increase to fund increases that we've seen in our operations and maintenance costs since fiscal year oh-nine, when we last raised rates for O and M. At that time, we presented you a rate increase that amounted to twenty-five cents per month on both the water and sewer base rates, and twenty-five cents per thousand gallon on each of the variable rate tiers for both water and sewer. We projected that that would generate about, a little over a million dollars, a million and ninety-three thousand dollars in additional revenue, and we showed you that that would, that increase would be about four dollars and twenty-five cents per month on the average residential rate payer. We also showed you that using that additional one million and ninety-three thousand dollars, we could, and our budget proposal was presented, we could end up the year projected ending fund balance of eight point two-five million, which met all of our minimum fund balance requirements, exceeded those. But more importantly, that if you pulled out the reoccurring expenses out of that budget, those O and M items, that your revenue now would exceed those reoccurring expenses and leave you about a half a million dollar buffer there to take care of swings in, in weather patterns that might, that will definitely affect our, the amount of revenue we bring in. You asked us for options following that, we went back and looked, we do have one option to present to you, and basically, that would be that you could reduce the, we could reduce the base rate increase to fifteen cents per month on both the water and sewer, and reduce the tier rate increase to fifteen cents per thousand gallons on both water and sewer. That would reduce the revenue that we would bring in, bring that down to six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, from a million ninety-three down to six seventy-eight. It would decrease that four twenty-five down to three fifteen, three fifteen, three dollars and fifteen cents per month would be the average increase for the residential water and sewer bill. If you do that and don't cut expenses, you can see there that your reoccurring revenue just barely exceeds your, your reoccurring expenses by about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That's a figure that we're, as a staff, are just really not very comfortable with, 'cause we've seen these weather patterns and how they can affect our, our revenue. So, if you were to choose to do that, we would recommend some budget cuts to reduce that, those expenditures, we're cutting about four hundred thousand out of revenue, so we're recommending to cut about four hundred thousand out of the cost as well. We would recommend to you, the generator docking stations would be something you could cut, that's a one-time, that's one-time money. Reoccurring money, to get that, that kind of, of money out of the budget, probably looking at cutting, you know, deferring maintenance, cutting the one hundred thousand dollars in annual sewer line cleaning that we do, and the sixty thousand dollars in annual gate valve and fire hydrant maintenance that we do. And then beyond that, the, we, we talked to you about putting two hundred thousand dollars in the budget for contract services, because we are operating shorthanded, and as all this, we're getting a heavy influx of new development that's requiring us to, we're getting behind on our ability to keep up with water and sewer tap requests. We used to be able to do those, our goal was two weeks, two weeks from the time a sewer water tap was paid for till the time was put in, and now we're, we're out to four or six weeks, and so our thought was, we'll put some money in the budget so that as we need to, we could hire, outsource some of that, those installations, and, and keep up a little better with, especially the development that is, 'cause some is more time sensitive than others. And so, when we would need to, we would have some money. But if we drop down to fifteen cents, we would recommend to go ahead and cut that out.
I have a, I have a question, and I don't know if you can help me, Gilbert and Charmel, the, in regards to that contract service, how, how, how many employees are we down, but we budget for those?
Today, in water, wastewater, we're down twelve.
So, we're down twelve people, but those have been budgeted for the year, can that money be flipped over and paid for that contract?
It's being used in overtime.
We're, we're using most of it in overtime, and I'm gonna talk about that in just a minute, in a minute.
It's a good idea, but.
Well, but by deferring this, it doesn't go away, and it's still there next year or increased.
Well, and this is recurring, you're cutting recurring revenues, so we would assume that these would, it would be a recurrence that you would, you would defer that. By doing so, you can see here that that buffer would, would jump back up to almost three hundred thousand dollars. We feel much more comfortable with that, it's still not our recommendation, our recommendation is still the twenty-five cents. I do wanna show you that with this cut, with these budget cuts, there are some consequences that you need to be aware of. You know, cutting out sanitary sewer line cleaning, eventually, that's gonna catch up with us, and you'll start experiencing more clogging of main lines, which can lead to interruption of service for residents and businesses, and of course, sanitary sewer overflows. I'm not saying this is gonna do it in year one, I'm just saying, when you defer that kind of maintenance, eventually, that's gonna catch up with us. So, we wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend doing it for a very, a real long time.
Lynn, let me ask you, you know, in past years, and probably before, a lot of this council was, had been there, we had faced, you know, in some executive sessions, where we faced some catastrophic situations that were very unpleasant for some of our citizens, is that because of issues like that, some of these things not being addressed? I mean, are those the kind of consequences you're talking about?
This, this deference of maintenance can definitely lead to that, if you remember back in the late nineties and. If you remember back in the late 90s and 2000, we got into an administrative order with the EPA for sanitary overflows that were occurring. Do what? Oh, you may not remember, but we, we spent about $30 million addressing that, cleaning, you know, replacing sewer lines. We got real aggressive, replacing some sewer lines that we knew were bad. We built a new trunk main down the west side of the city. That all stemmed from sanitary sewer overflows now.
Can you define for the public what a sanitary sewer overflow might look like?
Sanitary sewer overflow is when, is when one of two things happens. Either the sewer line underground becomes surcharged because it's leaked so much rainwater into it that it fills up beyond its capacity, and so wastewater then comes up out of the manhole covers into the street. That's one type. That's a wet weather sanitary sewer overflow. A dry weather sanitary sewer overflow is when you have a clogged sewer main or a lift station that's not operating for some reason, and that wastewater cannot travel down the line to the wastewater plant. Our systems are laid on gravity so that everything can run downhill. Well, then it would, it would surcharge that manhole, come out the manhole cover and run in the street. That's your two types of sanitary sewer overflows. Clogging of sanitary sewer mains contributes to dry weather sanitary sewer overflows. Here again, I'm not saying that's going to happen right away. I'm just saying that is one of the consequences of deferred sewer line cleaning. Fire hydrant and valve maintenance that's in here, you know, what that does to us, by keeping our valves exercised and operable, we can minimize the amount of, of area that has to be shut off when we have a water break. If we have a water break and two or three valves don't work, then we have to keep moving out until we can get it shut off. And so more customers are affected. I think that will eventually be a result of deferring that. And fire hydrant maintenance, aside from the painting and just the general not looking good, which I think is a, a lot of appearance of the city has to do with the appearance of the fire hydrants, but beyond that, those fire hydrants are a tool, they're a tool for us for flushing and maintaining water quality and maintaining compliance with state regulations, but they're a very important tool for firefighters also as they try to respond to emergencies. And so obviously, non-working fire hydrants or non-maintained fire hydrants will eventually have consequences also. And then the contract services, basically that, the consequence there is development just has to wait until we can get, get caught up. Beyond that, you know, any, any additional significant budget cuts or, or, not budget cuts, but revenue cuts, in other words, not funding any rate increase at this point, I think, you know, to get into that, to get into that much money, because this is really a maintenance budget, to get into that kind of volume, if you're talking about cutting another $500,000 or $600,000 out of expenses so that your recurring revenues meet your reoccurring expenses, then you're going to have to start looking at pipe replacement. We do a million dollars a year typically of recurring expense out of water wastewater. We got 1.2 in the budget this year for the first phase, the second phase of North Heights utilities replacement. That's probably going to be the only place where you're going to be able to find a big hunk of money that you can reduce like that. And so basically, the, the result then is, if you take $600,000 out, instead of being a seven-year neighborhood replacement of utilities, it becomes a 14-year replacement of, of utilities in that neighborhood. We mentioned a while ago, you know, it's, it's tempting to say, well, you've got 12 vacancies in water wastewater, and you've had them, and it's tempting to say, well, let's just, don't fund those positions, and we can, we can cut that revenue from the budget. I would caution you against that. We're using that money, have been using that money to fund the overtime. We've got employees working a lot of overtime right now. I've already, in, year-to-date, in FY14 significantly outran, overran the amount of overtime I had budgeted in for the entire year. At 204,000 in water wastewater for overtime for FY14, already eight and a half months into it, I've expended 233,000, and we're just now getting into the summer, which is your big overtime time, because you've got, it gets hot, the ground moves around, you've got a lot more water breaks. Those have to be addressed. They have to be addressed at, at midnight and 2:00 in the morning, just like they do during the day. Yes.
If, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if you had no vacancies, would you have overtime now, you think?
I would have some. I would not be having nearly the amount. I mean, that's why we all, historically, we budget for, for overtime, because in water, especially in water wastewater, you know, things happen on Christmas Day, they happen, things break down in the middle of the night. That's, that goes with being in the water wastewater industry. You're going to have that.
Oh, I've seen, oh, I've seen your guys in the middle of the night in a muddy hole working their tail off, so I appreciate that.
Let me just interject on top of Lynn. If you go back a couple of years, 13 and 14 is very odd years, and you can see the overtime budget in those departments is higher than normal than prior years.
Yeah.
It's a result of the vacancies and everything else, so it's not a normal thing.
And I, I understand. I wanted to follow up a little. Now, you been director how long now?
Since, let's see.
Well, it's been a while.
'03, since '03.
Okay. Now, you, this is probably the highest number of vacancies you've had.
The last, yes, this and the previous couple of years, yes. Previous year or so.
Okay. I lost my train of thought, but those, about that overtime, in those other years when you're, you had what you would consider almost full employment, maybe 98%, you still had overtime every year?
There, there is always some overtime, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. All right.
So, those 12 positions, I'm just trying to get an idea of what you mean by dollar figure that you're going to use for overtime.
Last year, to give you an idea, last year, let's see, I wrote this down. Last year, we budgeted $179,000 for overtime in water wastewater fund. At the end of the year, we expended $327,000, so we overran it by 82%. We spent 182% of the budgeted amount. So that is not, yeah, that is not everything. In other words, it's not exactly equal to the, to the number of vacancies, but it, it's a significant amount of it.
And you said this year, you budgeted 204,000 for overtime?
That's correct.
Now, those 12 positions, though, the average, I'm just going by average payroll, it's probably not correct, but just the, we're at, what, 33 million for payroll for the city of Victoria, based on that last presentation?
Well, Lynn can probably tell you what the, what's, yeah, what's the salaries on those, just what?
Well, it depends. There's a wide range of...
What's your average?
About 10 bucks?
They're 20 something, 28 maybe?
Most of the vacant positions start at salary-wise are around 20, 23, 24,000. So...
On up to, you know, crew chiefs, 30s.
Say 25,000 times 12. Gilbert, 25,000 times 12. Well, it's 250.
300.
Yeah. So...
Yeah. That's what I say, it's not, it's not even to even, but it's a significant chunk of that. It really is.
Good questions.
The other thing I wanted to just make note of, water and wastewater is, is, it's a lot different than, for instance, my street department program, it has, you know, street sweeping is a component and, and ditch cleaning is a component. And we could say, we're not going to sweep streets anymore, and we're going to reduce by three people by doing that. And we can make that decision, and it means we have dirty streets, but, but the street's still functional. Water wastewater is not, there's not a lot of, I can't think of any full programs here that you can really cut. I mean, you can, you can, the O and M money that's in here is what it takes to acquire, produce, treat, pump, distribute water and collect, transport and treat the wastewater. You can't, well, we're not going to treat it quite as well today, or next year as we did last year, or we're not gonna, we're not going to fix all the leaks. There's not a program there to cut, and this, this rate increase is for O and M expenses. It's, it's not for big, any big one-time expenditures. It's, it's, the cost of, cost of doing businesses has gone up, yes.
Lynn, we haven't even discussed the results of the ASR study, because we know we need off-channel storage. Or we haven't discussed the engineering study that came back, recommended we interconnect those lakes out there to increase our capacity and the expense of that. That's not even discussing any of this. When this rate increase is less than what most people pay for a cell phone, I think it's pretty reasonable, less than tele-tena.
Well, you went back on that, less than tele-tena?
Less than cable TV.
I've been tele-tena for years, that's just how old I am.
Cable, cable for those that don't know who tele-tena is.
There's, there's some interesting points, you know, this, I was looking at that 537, 537,000 extra cushion, you know, and I'm sure Gilbert debates that, and you have kind of a rule of thumb, relative percentage. And, you know, so if we were to go to the 122,000 under this like Plan B, you know, that's obviously riskier. The point is, we had two, two things tonight on our agenda that I think about when I look at this. One of them is that manhole collapsed. That wasn't in your buzz, budget. And it was 99, how much was it?
99,000.
$100,000.
The contract's 99.
You know, so 122,000, that, that's that risk you're talking about. What's going to collapse next year that we don't know about that's not in our budget? Now, I realize we have a general fund. I do realize that, you know, just, it's just food for thought. In other words, we could pull out of that fund for emergencies. The other item in our budget, in our agenda was that soft, no, the garage. It went up. They, they went up on us at the garage to take care of our vehicles, so costs go up for us too, to provide the same services, just like that private business. It is, I just thought of those things as you were talking, so, I'm sorry. Mr. Howpaski?
No, I was just going to make the point, I don't want to lower this to where it has to be subsidized by general fund. If these are the cost of doing this and providing water for our citizens, and they are within range of what other rates are in other cities, and we're looking forward to a future when we're going to have to do something about some of the water issues that steer us in the face, I think this is very reasonable.
It's, you know, well...
I prefer not to cut maintenance. We do that too much now.
The word is fairness.
That's part of our problem.
You know, for me, I'm sorry, I interrupt you, but the word is fairness, and I, I want to be fair. I don't like raising any rates. I don't think anybody here does. Also tonight, you know, we approved that cap for the landfill. A few years ago, we were robbing that fund to pay for some of this brush and garbage services, and if we didn't fix that when we did, and hats off to staff, we'd be floating a bond to cap the landfill. I don't know how we would do it. But, so, you know, it's, yeah.
Well, I appreciate the option. I mean, we, you know, I brought it up, and we brought it up, what, what would a rate decrease do, or potential rate decrease versus, you know, or at least an option, but to, to give us, oh, what would be the ramifications of a, of a decrease? That's very telling, and I appreciate it. So that, that certainly shows the risks that, shows the public and us, the risks we're willing to take or not take in accordance versus just saying, hey, I want this rate. It's not an arbitrary thing, so I appreciate you coming up with the options.
Mr. Howpers.
Couple of quick questions. This enterprise fund transfers money to the general fund, what percentage?
10% of revenues.
So that, that kind of, 2.7 million? Okay. So that could be lower, you wouldn't recommend lowering, of course, but that would... Probably lower that, then I'd find money in general fund.
That's less rest, less revenue coming into the general fund if you do that.
It costs what it costs, I don't want to rob the general fund.
Right. But let's keep in mind, there is a percentage going over to subsidize general fund.
His trucks, and I'm sorry to interrupt, use the streets too, so that's like their, their fee.
Their contribution to...
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Correct. Their tax to the city.
Yeah.
That's one way to look at it. I mean, were you also going to come up in, at some point, and look at how that 25 cents...
I am going to look...
How it goes across the rates and how they're determined?
Yes, sir. I'm planning on doing that. I do not, I do not have that done yet, and I don't know that I can have that really done by the time you adopt this budget. Certainly will endeavor to have it by the next year's budget. It's going to take, that's not going to be as easy, because I have to come, any move I make, I have to come up with justification for it.
Okay.
Well, along those lines, you know, my thinking has been recycle and conservation, you know, will that have an impact to encourage more recycling and conservation? Now, going back to the consequences, real quickly, on page four.
Yes.
When you talk about the clogging, the fire hydrants and the gate valves, what are our indices right now? How much, how much clogging are we experiencing? How much fire hydrant failure are we experiencing? How much gate valve failure are we experiencing? To tell us that these are consequences based on what's our bench here?
Right, right.
You know, another 10% increase of what we're already experiencing, or...
Well, and I don't know...
We're no experience, we're having no indices?
We are having, even with, even if you clean sewer lines regularly, you will have some clogging, and that's going to occur because you have grease being introduced into the wastewater system. I can, I have all, all that data in the database from work orders for years and years, so I can extract any reports I need to. The problem is going to be is, I can give you today's baseline, but I can't tell you if we don't, if we quit this sewer line cleaning, how much more is that going to go up over the next one year, five years, 10 years? I have no way to tell you that. I mean, it would all be speculation.
My hope would be, as, as we're replacing water and sewer lines, that we're not going to have experienced those failures.
With, 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 with gate valves, you're replacing some old gate valves, but if you don't exercise and maintain even the newer gate valves, they will fail to operate also.
You know, one of the things that, as Lynn and I were visiting, is kind of like, how do you make people kind of understand? And I did an analogy of my car. You know, if I don't replace my oil, it's eventually going to affect my engine. And even with a brand-new car, you do start, you're doing your oil replacement on a regular cycle, and so it's, it's P, it's preventative maintenance for our systems, just like we all do at our homes and on our vehicles. So it's kind of, and some people take a chance and don't do any PM, and they, you know, pay the consequences at a later date, you know, but with our water systems and our sewer systems, we just have to be careful about that.
What kind of timeframe do you need to get some kind of consensus on this matter?
We're okay. I mean, we're, right now, we've got the budget put together with the $4.25, and we can back off of that as...
We can come back in August.
Yeah, we're okay.
You're all right, okay.
Tax rate is more...
This is, yeah, this is, yeah, this is much easier for us to, as we get into the budget conversation, yeah.
Lynn, would also be a fair statement to say, the amount of money you've put in there for sewer, sanitary maintenance, cleaning, clogging, it's really not enough to cover the whole area.
Absolutely.
We're just doing just a minimal amount that really can, we can handle, that we can afford, basically.
Absolutely.
We would like more than that.
And typically, we're using our own staff and equipment to televise and clean wastewater lines on, on a, on a regular basis, on a monthly basis. Now, right now, we're shorthanded, and so that's another thing that gets deferred when you're shorthanded. So, but typically, you're right, Gilbert, this is, this is certainly not enough to do the entire city. You know, this is a, an amount that we think we can afford, that helps keep that clean on a rotating basis, and then we're coming in and hitting problem areas where we can.
Doesn't sound like a good job anyway, does it? That punishment duty?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. This was good presentation. Council, do y'all have anything else regarding the budget?
We can't, no, we, for the July 1st meeting, we don't have anything planned for the budget, a budget conversation, but we can put on that second meeting, July 15th, it's the 15th, you know, just another work session for budget conversation, if y'all want to continue having a conversation. And then our plan is to deliver the budget to you, the first meeting in August, and that's just the delivery, so you'll have the document in your hands for a few weeks before we come back for that first vote.
We have it on there for the first.
We have two council, two members missing on the first, so there'll be just five you can, but normally when we talk budgets, it's always, I always like to have all seven here, so...
I appreciate that, thank you.
You can always have another meeting, yeah.
Were you trying to achieve some sort of consensus on the, the water and sewer rate tonight, or are you just going to let that go and done?
I think we're okay on water and sewer. We just... I think we're okay on water and sewer, we just want to get that information back to you, so we can have any remaining balance or whatever.
Okay, do you have anything else? Council, nothing else? We're adjourned, thank you.
Good deal.